Good evening. And welcome to the school committee business meeting of Monday, August 17. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Redden.
Yes.
Mr. Hallfizer.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
And Ms. Bowden.
Here.
I'm present.
Wonderful. Would please stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. I wanted to just for the viewing audience at home, I wanted to go over what the agenda is going to be this evening. We will begin with the consent agenda. We'll be doing some warrants and minutes. And then we will move into superintendent Gallagher and his district staff going over the transition to school plan. At that point, we will begin public comment. And we are asking people to use the Zoom link that has been sent out to them to do public comment. We will introduce city council members and take their comments first and then move to public comment. The plan is for public comment that we will project the comments onto the screen as we are going to be doing with the presentation. After the public has all commented, we are going to have deliberations and vote on the school reopening plan. And then we have an additional agenda item for the post midnight crowd, the brief discussion of some of the COVID expenses at the budget and a discussion about whether we need to vote it again. Having said that, Mr. Cole, do we have warrants?
We have four warrants. The first one, I move that the following name bills that Newburyport Public Schools mounting in the aggregate $7,376.86 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second, discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next warrant, I move that the following name bills that Newburyport Public Schools mounting in the aggregate $127,317.08 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next warrant, I move that the following name bills that Newburyport Public Schools mounting in the aggregate $188,517.35 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the last warrant, I move that the following name bills and payrolls that Newburyport Public Schools mounting in the aggregate $367,937.86 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the schools account. There are no conflicts.
Second. It's been seconded. Is there discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have two sets of minutes. We have a set of minutes from the high school retreat on July 29, 2020, and our meeting on August 3, 2020. Do I have a motion for the retreat minutes?
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Second. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Do I have a motion for the Monday, August 3 minutes?
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to turn over the camera. DeShawn Gallagher, our superintendent, and his staff, who are going to go through the district reopening draft plan.
Great. Thank you. We're going to get in a couple of the screens here. All right. Well, I have my notes there, but I really don't think I need them since we've been working on this since June. Before I want to get started, I just want to commend the district leadership team, our teachers, path professionals, everybody within the school system for all of their hard work from the end of school and throughout the summer. I think this district really prided itself from the beginning on really fully understanding, having students in person, not knowing what the conditions were going to be for that. But really, that was our ultimate goal. How can we do it number one in a very safe systematic way that provides the district with success opening schools? And I think that through June, July, through August, as we all know, we have new regulations, new guidance, new metrics, and everything continues to change. But I just want to credit the faculty, support staff, the administration, district leadership for their steadfast focus on doing what's best for kids and best for families in a very safe way. We go to the next slide there. So I think this is what we don't want to forget. You know, up top is that virus. Up top, we're managing our school system in an active virus, not a virus that's going away, a virus around here that is slowed down, but it's an active virus. And it's going to stay with us for some time. So as we were developing our plans and taking a look, what the pandemic has forced us to look at many, many different options, first and foremost, we're in charge of designing an educational plan that fully implements all public health guidelines. So all of our plans that we've created, that we've adjusted, and the plan that you have in front of you, really is all about mitigation strategies, really looking at those safety protocols that are replaced in the guidance. So for us, all students and staff will wear masks and other appropriate EPEs. The social physical distancing of six feet from instructional environments, cohorting and contact tracing, and really trying to isolate a potential COVID case is paramount, daily home COVID symptom screening that Kathy Ricchio has created, and clear cleaning protocols from our facilities. Down the bottom, you can see just a note. So when we're developing these mitigation strategies, it was from the public health field, CDC guidance, DES regulations, and really the task force, which was made up of a lot of different people and different stakeholders. But we really focused, especially looking at a safe and successful reopening, the medical recommendations. And at the end of the slide, you'll see some of the background of some of our parents that have been dealing with this. This is their job. This is their job to deal with COVID-19 virus. They study the virus. They develop protocols for hospitals, for businesses, and they've been instrumental in working with us. Next slide. So in an education environment during the pandemic, we must design an educational program to support the health and safety of the entire community. So that is 2,300 students, that is over 450 staff, and that's from ages three to 18. Multiples from when they step on the school property and they go home, really developing for everybody the safest possibility to support the health and safety guidelines. So each strategy has an impact on how schools can operate as affected our proposed instructional plans. So operations and impact programming, we talk about masks. We have a greater on the younger students and some of our special ed students, and we have plans for that. We implemented the social distancing, and now we really like to call it physical distancing in every building. We have to look at every room. We have to look at every hallway, and that was all evaluated. We identified maximum capacities, assessed our ability to maintain the distance, and adjusted our planning appropriately to those safety guidelines. The NHS building presents many hurdles using the six-foot recommended guidance and the capacity is one-third of the school population. So the plans, so the plans that you have reflect the public health mitigation strategies that I just talked about. And we'll get into this a little bit more detail later on. Extensive DSE regulations for safety guidelines, regulations around transportation and facilities, special education guidelines, COVID positive tests, protocols, social emotional wellness guidelines, extracurricular requirements that we're still awaiting the state recommendation and guidance around that. And then also the task force recommendations, especially as we focus on the health and safety and the social emotion. The finance and operation and feasibility studies. So part of the state was to work on those three plans and really take a look at the feasibility of each one of those, even using that minimum of a three-foot guidance. And as we said, we exhausted that working with our task force and healthcare professionals, even looking at the three foot. So our plans recognize and I think share responsibilities. And I think for all the surveys that we sent, the number one piece was safety, health and safety of staff and students for all parents and staff and students that were surveyed was their number one thing. To support a safe return to as many students as possible to the in-person settings and to maximize learning that addresses the student's holistic needs. So all of the plans that our principals and district administrators will come up and briefly go through. This is just really an overview of the 52-page plan that we submitted in, I think it was last Tuesday. So people have a long time to kind of take a look at throughout the plans. Our presentation tonight will detail some of those. You may have heard some of this, but we also will be ready for later on when we deliberate with the school committee to hand some more specifics. So at this time, I'd like to call up Amy Sullivan, principal of the Brez, pre-K and Social distancing makes for a very long walk. Yeah, it is. So we'll have to have an on-deck circle for the next principal. Mr. Miller, get ready.
Thank you, Superintendent Gallagher. For the school committee, I'm excited to be able to present the plan for our youngest learners at the early childhood level at the Brez and Hens School. So I want to start with preschool. Our hybrid model for early childhood really focuses on bringing our youngest students back in a way that will maximize their in-person instruction and minimize remote. So our hybrid model does look a little bit different than the rest of the district. What we're planning on doing is having our preschool students come in and attend a half-day model four days a week, and that would be for approximately two hours and 45 minutes each session. It's a little different than what we offer during a typical year. During a typical year, we have half-days, three-quarter days, full days. This would allow us to socially distance by bringing children in for just that half-day model. They would be assigned either in AM or a PM session, and there would be no classes on Friday. That is actually pretty similar from what we usually do. On Fridays, our preschool teachers typically work with early intervention. Big part of being a great preschool program is bringing children on board when they turn three. So that would continue in terms of observation evaluation and working with early intervention. The nice component of this is if we are able to go hybrid, we will not have to have very young three- and four-year-old children do remote learning in front of the screen. And because there is an adjustment in our time of the program, we would adjust all our preschool tuition rates to $3,200 for the year, which is the price of our half-day program. Obviously, students who have IDPs would receive a free or reduced tuition, which is in our tuition policy and eligibility criteria. Another great thing about being able to go half-day is we don't have to worry about lunch for the little kids. And just to reiterate, there'd be no extended learning or full-day hours in the preschool hybrid model. So this is just a sample schedule going through the day. Typical, really play-based model. We're hoping that when the children come in, that one of the very first things that we can do as we're settling them, getting them accustomed to teachers and masks and new routines and stickers on the floor and all that, that we can bring them right outside for some playtime. As soon as they get there, it will also minimize a transition of unpacking at their cubby. And then we would follow a traditional schedule. Usually, our preschool classrooms have a whole group of what we would call morning meeting or a center time. They would be socially distanced around the circle at the morning meeting. So we'll work on different options there. They would also have time to work, like with table activities, with fine motor types of activities. And if they were there, they'd be either working at their own table or at a table with a pair with a divider in between them. But we do want to make sure that with this model, with the school committee and the parents are aware, that we would be striving for play-based. So children at the preschool level would have an opportunity to work in a small group, at least, you know, a couple maybe once or twice a day in a classroom. We would assign them to even smaller cohorts in the classroom so that there's only everyone group sharing the same materials each day. And we think that that is a developmentally appropriate option for the little children. So that would be a sample preschool schedule. Kindergarten is really very similar. We're looking to bring all of the kindergarten students into a half-day model as well, same amount of hours, two hours and 45 minutes. They would start a little bit earlier than preschool, so we would have that staggered arrival that we have had in the past, which I think will be even more important this year. A little bit different in terms of the four-day model. The kindergarten students would follow the same schedule that we're hoping grades one through eight will follow, where Wednesday will be the day that they do not have school. And that will help keep in line with the teachers in terms of their planning, in terms of their ability to do some parent consultation and some remote planning ideas on Wednesday and some time with their colleagues. Because part of this model is we have taken out all of the specials. Traditionally, kindergarten would have art library, music, PE and STEM. In order to fit this model in, to bring two cohorts a day in, we're taking away the teachers' planning time, so we would be giving that to them on Wednesday. And I really did commend the preschool and kindergarten teachers for really wanting, knowing that this would be an adjustment to sort of their past practice and work, and that they really want to be able to try to bring the kids in. We would not collect kindergarten tuition. The school committee, that really is because we charge for a full-day program. Half-day kindergarten is always free. So in a half-day model, we would not collect tuition. And I want to thank Nancy Lysick for really helping with that in the budget. We would have breakfast available for children in kindergarten, a granola bag that would be available to the rest of the school, if your parents want to purchase that, but no lunch would be served, just like preschool. So similar to preschool, here's the kindergarten hybrid schedule. Again, broken into different structures of the day, some whole group, some small group, some table time activity, where we would be maintaining that six-feet social distancing except for when children are working in a small group and a very small cohort and play-based So the special education hybrid plan, I just think it's important to note, even though it is our hope to bring preschool and kindergarten students in for half-days a week, it really does come down to the same amount of time that you'll hear from the other schools of two full days a week, it's the same amount of time. And we do have some students that might meet high-means criteria that we cannot fit their services or their program into four half-days per week. This would really be for some of our severe profound students, and this would be whether we would need to look at extended hours during those four half-days, or maybe that we could build in individualized plans to extend what they require. So that's just an important note on the early childhood and special education model. So the remote model, although we are hoping for hybrid, we did learn a lot last spring of how to make this work for very young learners. And for preschool, we are really lucky that we have a very thematic-based program where we have different topics that they focus on, whether it's an author or fairy tales or different seasons. So all of our activities are tied to whatever topic they are doing. And the teachers work really hard to make sure that there are both ELA, literacy and math activities, but also that integration of play. And they work especially hard at the preschool level to provide an integration with the really new service providers like speech, OTPT. And so it really is more of a different choice that they can be, they can select each day. Depending upon the class and the age of the students, we would like to offer also some morning meetings. If we were able to do those sort of recorded or live, and it was real well of effort, we would. And if not, we would record those. And on the next slide, you can see what that interactive daily activity board looks like. So this is around the theme of community helpers. You can see that there's a recording there of our lovely Ms. Sue, and how all the different activities are broken down by different domains. So that is something that we thought worked really well, and teachers have worked also over the summer to, with the extended school year services, to kind of make that a little bit more robust. And if we go to kindergarten, kindergarten, the half-day schedule, you know, you're going to hear a lot, I think, today about asynchronous, synchronous, and independent learning. Synchronous would be while the teacher is presenting live or recorded. Asynchronous would be when the teacher might start something off and the children would continue, and then independent would be extensions of activities that they could do on their own. So that's a big shift from where we were in the spring in terms of what we're planning on for our remote learning. We would be offering for the kindergarten program, if we had to go remote, a half-day schedule as well. We're not going to extend our hours remote if we're able to bring them in in person. And also, you know, we're worried about their attention and screen time at that level. But we would require attendance and participation. We would be looking at their work and assessing it and progress monitoring it. And they would always, the day will always start with a daily morning meeting and a closing meeting. And then just on the next slide, there is an example of that. So you can see where we have each of literacy and math as the main focus, some time for science and history, social science and STEM, in different ways that we plan on designing that. And the remote learning platform, this is a shift to last spring, we had mainly a choice board. This would be either uploaded on Google Classroom, much like the older grades, and also using the platform of Seesaw, which is very age-appropriate for our youngest learners. So that is the plan for early childhood at Brez and Hens.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Sullivan. All right. So do you want us to hold questions? How do you want us to do that?
Yeah, we'll get through the presentation.
Okay.
You can hold questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Chair. Our questions aren't going to come until after the public comment, right? Discussion, and that's how I took the agenda. Well, I was thinking questions in terms of clarification, whether we need something clarified.
I had a few questions. I didn't know whether we were going to ask at the end. So you'd like us to hold off?
I think how we structured that is through the presentation and as part of the comments and deliberation of the school committee.
Okay.
I'll have principals here.
Okay.
Along with district leaders. Be your discussions. Be you to make the decision for any clarifying questions. But we'd like to, I think, go through the presentation because we do have city council and also some public comment. But how will people be throughout the evening through your clarification? Awesome. All right, I'll keep my mask on for right now. I'd like to introduce our new principal, Tim Veller, the resident for grades one to three.
Too bad we're on deck circle.
That's not bad.
Who do you need next in the on-deck circle?
It would be Abolyn, principals.
Good evening, everybody. I must say, it's nice to finally see all of you in person instead of a little square on the screen. And before I start, I do want to just take one minute and thank all the people in the back, because this is a daunting task when you know everybody. When you come in cold and you don't know the faces, it's really nice to have all that support. So thanks to everybody for that. At the Brez and Hens for grades one, two, and three, our hybrid will definitely look a little different than the pre-K and K that Principal Sullivan presented. We'll break our kids up into two cohorts, cohort A and cohort B, approximately half of the students in each group. Every student will come two days a week, whether it's Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday, everyone at home, learning remotely. Boy, I wish I had better eyes right now. Our day will begin, whether you're remote or in-person, at 8:30 in the morning every day with a morning meeting. That morning meeting will be part of our synchronous time where the teacher will be live with the kids in front of her and on the remote learning platform, which will either be Seesaw or Google, depending on the grade level. We feel that that's important, to get the kids at home started so that everybody in the class is on the same page. And we also feel it's very, very important that a piece of that morning meeting every single day, we talk about social emotional wellbeing of our kids, and we support them in that way. We understand they haven't been in a classroom in six months and change, and there's going to be some issues, and we want to be proactive in the way we deal with that every single day. Students will spend the majority of their time in school in one single classroom. Adults will move. We've created some patterns of flow within our building because we're able to. We have assigned stairways and specific areas of the building for grade-level staff and students only. So for instance, the stairway at the very end of the building would be for grade-three staff and students to use. No one else would be in that area. That's to, it's to create a little bit smaller cohort as the kids come into the building. Then they'll get into their classroom, which creates a little bit smaller cohort. So it allows us to contact trace more effectively if, God forbid, that's necessary. Student staff, everyone should expect some serious modifications of what it looks like in our building. For instance, we will eat lunch in the classrooms. We'll have specials in the classrooms. We will be setting up some outdoor spaces when the weather's available for classes to go out and be socially distanced from each other. The remote learning day will have synchronous, asynchronous, and independent activities for the kids that are at home. Part of their day, especially the morning meeting and the closing of the day meeting, will be a synchronous time where everyone's learning together and the teacher's doing a live stream, so to speak, with those kids at home. Particularly, our math and ELA will also have a synchronous piece. More than likely, it will be on the beginning of the lesson where new materials are introduced. Then the students will go into some asynchronous assignments that the teacher talked about and gave them, and the kids in the classroom and the kids at home will work on the same type of work. There'll also be independent work to go with ELA and math, a lot of the science and social studies for the kids to work on during the day. So the typical day, we've tried to build in, sorry to find my spot here, for the, for the kids that are remote, we've tried to build, as well as the kids in school, where they're not just sitting in front of a computer. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. I appreciate that. Where they're not just in front of a computer all day. For those of you that have it in front of you, the remote are in the green color because it's just not age appropriate for these little ones to sit in front of a computer from eight thirty to two thirty or longer. So we give them blasts, I guess, of synchronous time, maybe fifteen minutes or so. Then we give them some asynchronous or independent work to do, which is still with the computer. But then I try to build in movement breaks so that they can get up and run around the house. Principal Sullivan, you're the best. Thank you. So that they can get the wiggles out, so to speak, which frankly, we've done for a long time. At least everywhere I've been with kids that are small. If you have kids of your own, you know they've got to run around in circles once in a while. So we try to break up that remote learning day for those kids at home in that way so that we can then kind of have them on a computer, on a computer, on a computer, on a computer, and end our day again as a whole class comes together. And then the next thing I would talk about is the remote model. In the hopefully unlikely case that we have to go to a remote model, because as you know, our goal is to get the kids into the school and to slowly bring more and more of them back because we need them there, they need to be there. It's best for everybody, but we have to watch out for health and safety. So the health and safety regulations say we need to go home for a little while. We just want to make sure we're prepared for that. During a fully remote model, teachers will connect with students and families five days a week. That would include that daily morning meeting, especially again. It's very important to check on those social emotional concerns of all of these kids. Frankly, I think about it for my daughter who leaves in a few days to go back to college. And it's the same issue, just a bigger kid. Teachers will have the ability with Google Meet to meet with the entire class when they're remote. Perhaps give an assignment and then select a small group that may need some additional support or an individual who may need some additional support in Zoom, without the other kid Zooming, knowing which group she's in and so forth. Daily attendance is required by the state and will be taken. And all of the work that they receive remotely will be graded. I wasn't here in the spring, but without a whole lot of time to plan, I'm not sure how they could set up a program like this. But now that we've had some time to really look at it, we're going to make sure that everything's as robust and complete as we can make it. As you can see now on the screen, and we'll hope it stays clean the way it is, is the remote schedule. You can see it goes the entire day. As I said, it's got the morning meeting, the closing meeting. On the right, you can see where there is a mix for those kids that are remote. When all the kids are remote, excuse me, there's a mix of the synchronous, asynchronous, and independent learning that's available. And I believe we're ready to do that. And that's our plan for hybrid and remote at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. All right. At this time, we'll have the Mullen presentation. So for the people viewing at home, we have the PowerPoint. And then we'll look to send out another Zoom link for the public comment. But we'll go through this presentation first until we figure out our technical difficulties with the Zoom. All right. So Jamie Sokolowski.
Thank you. I'm going to use Jamie Sokolowski as assistant school with Mullen. So we are also following the res working on the hybrid model to bring fifty percent of the students back each day using the three-two splits, so three days remote, two days in person for each group. Each home room at the Mullen is split into two groups. Group A, which will be Monday and Tuesday, and Group B, which will be Thursday and Friday, with everyone remote on Wednesday. So for the in-school days, the students are in the building. The typical schedule, starting at seven forty-five, going until two fifteen. Their schedule will include all of their academic classes as well as explore classes and community building, team building, and social emotional activities. We have prepared the classrooms and hallways for, to still look like an elementary school, to still feel grounded by the COVID deadline, and in hopes to include as many social consent movement activities as possible throughout the day. For remote days, students who are at home, they'll participate in the morning meeting with their whole class, just like Tim mentioned with the president. During the day, they'll also have bind subjects, all academic subjects, and they'll participate in an explore class. And special education services will be provided. One of the interesting things we're doing with our explore schedule this year is instead of having a different explore class every day like we do in typical years, we'll be having students in their home where we go to an explore class for the entire month. So for example, they'll have art for the whole first month of school. And that will allow them to really engage in deeper, in some project-based learning that can continue while they're in person and at home. So we're pretty excited about that. And I think the students will get a lot out of that, whether they're at home or in person. Like every school year, we will measure and assess our students who've started sixty at the beginning of the year just to see where they are and to make determinations on where to go from there. One of the bonuses of hybrid is that we've built smaller class sizes while the kids are in school, but allow the teachers to really make some meaningful connections with their classroom, create a small, tight-knit community, and possibly even go deeper into the curriculum than they are allowed to during the regular school year running out of class and playing three-point four-bits. So here is an example of in-person and remote. As you can see, they're a little similar. Students will be doing the same activities throughout the day, keeping in mind that this is going to hopefully allow the students to feel part of the school community even when they're at home. They'll have the morning meeting and the full class, math, possibly synchronous or asynchronous, and remember day. And we have varying activities, which will allow students to be keeping up with the class even when they're at home. So we have the Eureka Math curriculum and I D Literacy, which are really going to help our students stay on track and just keep really fluid momentum with the curriculum. All students will receive instruction from their classroom teachers. We have classroom, we'll do some recorded video lessons, different online reinforcement. All of our teachers have been putting in hundreds of hours over the summer to create really innovative lessons. Jackie Bruce has been teaching back-to-back Google Classroom. And there are just so many different types of courses that our teachers really reflected on the spring semester. Took note of what was great, took note of what they could improve on, and helped work really hard to create a robust program for the fall. So we're really looking forward to seeing what they're going to do with the hybrid model. Social emotional supports will still be in place throughout the school day, whether in person and remote. And we really value the social emotional health of all of our students. And we can guarantee that will be a priority as we return to school. All of our teachers are committed to getting to know the students, making connections, creating peer connections. Our PDAS model will allow us to naturally embed some structure within the school day and help teach safety protocols in a developmentally appropriate way for our students. The added PD days at the beginning of the school year will really help our staff bond back together again and create that staff community that we really miss so that we're able to then pass that on to our students and just make school a place to be and a safe community. We had a trauma-sensitive task force work over the summer with experts in the community and many of our trauma-certified teachers in the district. And they will be providing resources to teachers and families as well to help them start this school year. Thank you.
Rupert, about middle school, preschool, he's a terrible, and he very likes me, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Middle school's schedule and structure is really similar. We align K through eight going up. So it's a similar hybrid approach of a Monday, Tuesday group, a Thursday, Friday group, with a Wednesday remote for the entire district. So I'm going to review that. And I want to speak to from a middle school perspective is some of the lessons that we took from the spring and the work that's happened really since April, when I think we realized that school was not going to be coming back in a way that we were going to recognize. And we began to really work on what could it look like? And how could we maintain our middle school philosophy and approach? The daily advisory has been incorporated into all of our schedules. That is actually something that we would have done regardless of this COVID situation. And advisory is just an opportunity for us to make smaller groups of students, align them with one adult in the building. That's kind of their academic and social and emotional mentor. And then the smaller students can get to know each other well. I think all of you can probably remember from middle school. It's a very social time and it's really unstable sometimes. So an advisory program really tries to build. You have a safe cohort of peers who may not know them to start with, but time is put into getting to know them. And then you have an adult who kind of has their pulse on you. And why I think that's so important for us in the fall is that one of the lessons that we took from the spring was being able to keep track of all of our students in a way that we can, when you see them day to day in the building. And I have, you know, I can't glance at you and know if that person didn't come into the building in the way that they usually come into the building. Or if there's something that seems a little bit off with that particular student. So building the advisory in, I think, is just a way for us to strengthen our relationships with students and our understanding of what's happening with them, whether they're in the building or they're remote, whether it's hybrid, in person, or a fully remote structure. That will be in place. Go ahead, Seth. Sorry. So back to the structure as well. You'll see that our daily schedule, like everybody, we have all that edjargon stuff in there. We're synchronous, asynchronous, we're independent. And I think all of that means is just, we're taking a look at, just like in school. The teacher is not speaking to you all day long, hopefully. We have worked really hard to get out of that model, actually, of the teacher lecturing and being in front of you, speaking all day long. However, the teacher has a certain degree of expertise. And even if you're doing project-based learning, that teacher needs to do many lessons to get you going with a degree of expertise so you can look forward to the project. And hopefully, you're also talking with your friends. And that's one of the reasons that Angela has worked so hard along with Dawn to figure out what's the best platform for us in terms of either Google Meets or Zoom, some kind of remote system. What we're really looking for is to support our learning. And I'm willing to want our peers to be able to talk to each other in small groups, whether they're in the classroom or whether they're remotely. And we want to be able to continue to do some cooperative type learning. And so we're looking to continue to use Google Meets as that strategy to support that. And then lastly, in terms of structures, that we'll be adding, both the Knox and Mullen school will be putting in Overcoming or Remote Student Commons. And so the idea is that if you're at home and you're struggling, either you're a student or a parent, and you are just meeting like, I need someone to help me find some of the lines in my Google Meet. I need somebody to help me get the audio running. Or I can't even remember what class I have right now. We will have a live meet open all day long that will be staffed by a person. So you could pop onto that meeting and you can ask a question. And then we will hopefully be able to help you solve that problem. In addition, we're hoping that you can also submit requests for help from our nursing staff, from our food services, or from our counseling team. So that will be a submission. But the problem solving around your academics in the moment will be an open meet that will be staffed all day long. So come on to Overcoming. All of those structural changes were really in response to our students, our staff, and our parents telling us what worked and what didn't work in the spring. The other piece that our teachers said loud and clear, and I think I heard this from a lot of parents as well, is just this idea that middle school is taught about teaching students how to be learners. And we have to teach them how to be remote learners. So when you're home, if you're lounging in your bed, you're making videos off, it's going to be super hard to pay attention to a lesson on algebra. If you can set up your space with a desk, a table, and you can sit up, and you can turn on your video, and you can participate with audio, there's going to be more success. So we've put together a series of fifteen lessons that are all about, we're calling it Off the Connecticut, it's really all about how to be a successful remote learner. And it runs again from how to manage your Gmail to how to manage your multiple Google Classrooms, and a variety of stuff like that. And then finally, the other change I think that the middle school has is that we're going in now to year four, I believe, of a one-to-one Chromebook device. In the spring, we chose not to send all of our devices home, not knowing what was the impact on the district in the fall in regards to replacing devices that we may lose. We did send home by request devices. For the fall, we will be sending all of our students home with their device. So you have your device, you have it with you at school, you have it with you at home. And that will support our technology as well. So that's a little bit about the structure. Our teachers have also looked really carefully about, this is...
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Do you want me to wait for you?
Next one.
Next one. Okay. How do we reach our students? How do we teach better? How do we change our instructional strategies? How do we look at the resources that we're using to teach the courses that we're developing? And that's been all the framework on behalf of the entire Knox staff over the summer. And really, reaching as far back as able, we realized, first of all, we wanted to do a back-to-school intensive, is what we're calling it. So it'll probably be about a ten to fifteen day unit that the entire school, grade six through eight, begins with. And intensively looking at welcoming you back to school, giving you an opportunity to process what happened in the spring and get back into a school routine, teaching new routines of remote learning or hybrid learning, assessing where students are at with their skills in regards to basic literacy, math, literacy in math, English, science, social studies, and really just kickstarting our whole advisory program. So that's our back-to-school intensive. I have a team of twenty-five teachers who have been working all summer on that. And it's really coming together very well. We're super excited about it. The other piece that we're kind of rolling into that is middle schools have a kind of identity exploration. And the exploration of identity and the use of a variety of different types of tests, it's also an opportunity for us to open up the discussion around race, bias, and some of those issues that we as a community and as a larger United States have been facing. And then finally, our teachers, as Jamie mentioned, hundreds of them have been in courses that are really enhancing their own strategies for teaching both in the classroom and remotely using technology. But I wanted to add to that, we have a large cohort of teachers at the high school and middle school who are still working with essential partners. Because I think what, as a middle school, we don't want to lose track of is the idea of student voice. And the idea that you want as best, you are a part of a dialogue and a discussion. So even if we are working with Google Meets, we are hoping to engage our students in dialogue and discussion around their content areas. So how the group of teachers are really working on that. And then in addition to that, a big list that you can find in the whole report links out to some of the really specific tools that we'll be using. So I'll finish just with some sample schedules. All of our schedules have these giant asterisks as well. And the reason for that is in to not be transparent. It's really to honor a middle school approach, which is very historically a team-based, site-based management model, where an interdisciplinary team of teachers has a little bit of ownership over the particular day-to-day schedule so that as something arises, if there's a big project in the works, they can make some modifications to the schedule as we move through. Of course, we cannot do that this year in a way that was difficult. And we did not do that in the spring. There will be a very set and unified schedule. But I would like the opportunity to work for the first ten days of school with our professional teaching staff to fine-tune the details of our schedule, really hone in on the exact minutes of our periods and kind of how that all falls together. So what you will see in a hybrid model, we have these schedules so that our remote students will also be in a live class separate from their other peers. So we'll have five courses, five classes going on every block. Four of those classes will be in school, face-to-face. And the fifth one will be with a teacher who's a teacher who's teaching for the students remote, and that happens on each team. And then go to the next slide.
Done.
Okay. The remote schedule, this is grade six. One of the things that we tried to do, we've heard a lot of this from the kids, is they were super confused about the times. And so as much as we could break our day at kind of a normal time, we tried to do that and also providing a break in between the classes, because in the spring, we had classes kind of back-to-back-to-back, and it took a few minutes to like, you needed to gather your thoughts, get off of one Zoom call and onto another Zoom call. So there's some big struggles in that as well. And that's, that's the middle school. So thank you.
Thank you. Then Principal Furlong. I want to thank Mrs. Salkolowski and Principal Furlong for their work in school, and remember Callian for assisting us with some more security as we continued our presentation. So Principal, come on.
All right, thank you. We can go to the first slide there, Dawn. So as we've been engaging in the work throughout the summer, there were some key considerations that we definitely wanted to take on as we thought through the plan for the high school, just from different focus groups that we had back in June and then also into July, just really almost modifying some of these key considerations as we went. But really, first and foremost, which you heard from all the principals tonight and Mr. Gallagher at the start, that really kind of starting with the baseline and most important, the clear and manageable safety measures. So with all of our safety protocols in place for the high school, we had done a presentation back on July 27th, the week of July 27th for parents and for students, just talking about different protocols that we would have in place for the high school, realizing that was our framework for really then figuring out, all right, what are our options that we can provide for trying to get students into the building? The other big key consideration really stemmed on teaching and learning and really working to minimize disruption, so recognizing that the reality is that it's going to be a volatile year in terms of being in the building, not being in the building. And so really looking to try to create a schedule that allowed us to minimize disruption to the best of our ability, the teaching and learning, and really trying to keep things consistent for students and for teachers, especially when it comes to how they engage in their learning. And then the other part was all by key consideration was maintaining our program. Early on, one of the things that we did look into was the whole idea of cohorting students at the high school level in classrooms, very similar to what you've heard for the K through 8 models, where student movement is very limited and it's more the adults cycling in. And so again, with some of those, but with that, as we explored that and really took a look at the impacts that it had to a student's schedule, and floating those impacts by some small groups of students and parents, we realized that was just not a great way for us to go in terms of really taking away the personalized part of a student's schedule and choices that they have in terms of types of leveled classes that they would want to make. So that's where that became an essential consideration for us as we were really trying to think through our plans. All right, we're going to create a plan that allows us to maintain our program, and then at the same time also thinking through how do you minimize disruption to the school? Now, another big piece was also community and class building, so finding a way to bring grade levels together. Early on, as we were exploring different hybrid models, that was one thing that did come up in our meetings, so a grade level is never going to be together. So that was something that kind of pushed our thinking a little bit as well in terms of could there be an opportunity for a full grade level to come together at different points in the school year? Now, as we got into more of the mid to late July, and we're working with different subcommittees of the task force, this is things, this is where things got a little bit more complicated as we were really looking at the, what was the capacity of the high school to have more of a hybrid-type experience for students? And the big question around contact tracing and cohorting came up. And so just to kind of go into this a little bit more in terms of my understanding is that, you know, with various hybrid models, you know, if I have 10 students in one classroom, and then they leave to go to other classrooms, so our ability throughout the school day, so they're now exposed, they're exposed to other students, and so then our ability to contact trace did become a little bit difficult. So we were just challenged, can we think differently about how we can get students into the high school? And that's really kind of what led to the plan, or the proposal, rather, I do want to say, that we did share and push out. And over the past week and a half, just trying to, you know, hold different presentations for parents and for students, just to kind of give an understanding, but also respond to as many questions as possible. And then finally, the last, obviously, key consideration, just how do we start? Starting in a way that's obviously safe, but then allows us to be successful. And so where we landed in terms of our proposal is that initially, teaching and learning would be remote teacher-led instruction. And I'll get a little bit deeper with that. And then really looking for a way to bring students in, we would have, we would use our Clipper Block that we had created last year as we were doing the whole schedule change and that we incorporated in. And I can get a little, I'm going to get a little bit more into the Clipper Block in a few minutes. But right now, with the way the schedule that we're proposing is that this would just be initially every other week for a grade level to come in and for our staff to work with them on the curriculum that's been developed around the Clipper period. But ultimately, with the goal for us reaching points in our cycle to increase student access to the building and getting to in-person instruction. So the rationale behind the remote teacher-led instruction to start, so we clicked on. So what this does, it allows us at the high school to maximize teaching and learning, get our students accustomed to the routines of the, of the remote instruction, but then also at the same time, getting our teachers to become very adept at managing the tools and driving home lessons for their students remotely. And so this, and I have a slide that I'll get into in a few minutes, that just talks about how the remote, the remote teacher-led instruction being very different from what was implemented in the spring. The other thing that this allows us to do is it allows us to maintain our full program schedules, and talking with Ms. Blackstock today, and we did a student meeting today as well, so she's hopeful to get schedules out tomorrow to all of the students. And then the other part is as we increase students coming into the building to be with their teachers for in-person instruction, recognizing that the ability for us to bring in a full class, I mean, a classroom, is not viable. But what this does is it does set us up, as teachers become more equipped, or as they are equipped to manage these lessons remotely, that they then are also able to stream students into the classroom more at home. And then ultimately, just creating a lot of flexibility. So with some of our protocols that Kathy Ridiogo talked about, where students are coming to the building, but they're, they're completing a brief survey so they can assess their own wellness and how they're feeling. If a student isn't feeling well, you know, we're asking them to stay home. But what this allows us to do is take pressure off for students. If it's a day that they're supposed to be on-site, as we increase access to the building, they would still be able to have access to the classroom and the learning that was going on, being managed by the teacher. So as the advisory part is concerned... Click it on. So initially, what this allows, it allows each grade level to be together, and also provides in-person advising on grade-specific needs. And again, I'm going to get into a little bit more specifics about what the advisory is. It also supports our ability for class and community building, and gets students to the building and sets us up to increase student in-person access to their teachers. And so just to really emphasize, you know, I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people. I know our plan is not very popular in terms of how we're starting, but I do look at this as our baseline, our baseline for growth in a way that sets everybody up to be successful in a year that the reality is it's going to go back and forth. And then, and so that's really the key behind that last bullet about getting students to the building and so ultimately setting us up to increase student in-person with the teachers. So just to give emphasis on how the remote instruction is going to be different than it was in the spring. So again, we're going to have a bell schedule that students are going to follow and teachers are going to follow. Teachers are going to provide live instruction from their classrooms, where they have all of their resources available to them. Student attendance is going to be taken. That was one of the big things, just from the survey that we had cast out back in June, the lack of accountability on a lot of levels. And then with the direct instruction and where the teachers and how they're planning lessons, is that these lessons are highly interactive. It's not just about the student watching the teacher give a lecture for 80 minutes, which is how our current schedule is set up, just to be able to provide flexibility for students going back and forth and interacting with each other, and teachers really becoming very savvy and using the meet features of setting up small group breakouts, where students are able to have dialogue about different items that are being discussed by the teacher, and really the teacher working to manage the, to help the student manage the time and the learning for students as the period goes along. The other part that teachers, as they've been working on different plans this summer, blending in the social-emotional components, so recognizing the value of really working to build student connections. So it's not just about the student being there, listening to the teacher, it's about just like, it's about interacting with their peers as they're getting into the meet of the lesson, but then also from the curriculum subcommittee of that task force, just, you know, working in formative assessments at the end of the lesson as well, so teachers really have a good sense of what students took away, what they learned, and how that information is being used to plan for the following lessons. So this is a sample schedule that we're proposing to push forward, so it provides for 80-minute periods, four blocks a day. We have also incorporated in opportunities for extra help. And so you also see where our Clipper Block is, and then we've been able to work out with teachers that on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that they would be available by appointment for in-person extra help at the high school. Now, with the Clipper period, so this is why initially, it's every other, it's every other week a grade level coming in, because we have the Clipper Block set up on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So three of the grade levels would be participating in the Clipper period with their advisors virtually, and we, our plan is to really use it like we have, we're going to be intending to use it this school year with the work we had done last year to really redesign our schedule. And so you may remember, as we went, as the plan was to go to a later start time, the whole idea of study halls really became compromised. And so the idea, so that's where the whole idea of the Clipper period or a flex block came into play, that allows all students and teachers to be available at this time and really support students getting extra help directly from teachers. And then we do have one day where all seven classes would be meeting, but really with the purpose of, you know, a teacher being able to recap what was learned that week and prepping students for what would be coming forward. And Dawn, if you go to the next slide. And so I think I may have already jumped the gun on this slide here.
There we go.
Yeah. So just with the in-person Clipper Block, so when a grade level is in, they would be organized into cohorts in the large spaces of the first floor. So this was a big part of, as we were getting feedback back in mid to late July, just in terms of, you know, if we can maximize the large spaces. And so the idea is that students would be organized into pods of 15. Our cafeteria, they can fit three pods. Our, we have a conference room that can fit two pods. We have the gym that we're going to be able to organize into four pods. We have our auditorium and our library, the class, the, each advisory, the teachers will be going down to work with them on whatever the task. But then, and then guidance is really playing a big role in developing the modules that would be delivered, really just around grade-specific meetings. And so this was really all the work that was being prepped prior to everything happening with our closure last school year, as we knew that we were going to be getting into a brand-new schedule this school year. And then ultimately, with, if it's a fair-weather day, administratively, we can coordinate assemblies for grade onsite outside on the football field. And so for students that would be at home for the virtual Clipper Block, this is where we would also use it kind of in the way that we had intended as we were planning our new schedule last year. So first, it would start off with a part that would be 15, 20 minutes, would be a teacher-adviser just checking in in terms of how students are, are doing academically, kind of a social-emotional check-in, but then also an opportunity to continuously collect student feedback on our program. And then the other part is we had invested in a software called Enriching Students. And the whole idea of the software was for and will be for students to sign up for slots to meet with a teacher. So each teacher has a certain designated number of slots for students to, to sign up for, and then they can go get direct extra help from the teacher. And so with this plan, so really, the idea is to use this as our baseline and to increase students coming into the building. And so, and one of the big pieces, if our pod structure is successful, the idea is then we then, we get to a point, whether it's two weeks out or three weeks out, whatever the recommendation is from the school committee, is that we get grade levels in for two days in a row, organized in our pod structure. And what that allows us to do is then the teachers are able to coordinate how students receive their in-person instruction. So for example, this is, this is really what then allows us to use all the spaces around the building on fair-weather days. So if I'm an English teacher for grade 12, I know A period, my full class is downstairs. And so we can meet outside and do a full-class session. Now, one of the things, because of how we're starting, the other idea is for students who either A are not comfortable coming to the building, or they just were not feeling well enough, but still wanted to participate in the class, you know, they, the teachers are going to be adept at being able to stream them in and participate in those activities. And so that's really kind of the rationale that we were thinking was just a way that we could continue in a seamless way, students being able to access teaching and learning as we continue to look for ways to increase students coming into the building to have in-person instruction. And then the other part about this method, as we were developing it and getting feedback from different subgroups of the task force, is that it did allow us to really have controlled movement as we worked to provide in-person instruction. And so really not getting into that situation that I explained before, you know, that if you have 10 students in a classroom, even in a hybrid model, and then they move to other classrooms in the building with, you know, nine other different students, it becomes very difficult to contact trace. And I have to admit, that was a big learn for me through this whole process in terms of what it means to actually contact trace at the high school level. And it definitely shifted my thinking and all the people that had been working on this plan to come up with this proposal. But again, just really with the ultimate goal of looking to increase students gaining that in-person instruction. I'm not sure. That was my last slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. This time, I'd like to follow up from the NC project, to kind of talk through the special education and along with some comments. Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, back one. That's okay. So for Student Services, we address not only students on IEPs falling under the category of special education, but also those students who qualify for but also those students who qualify for Section 504 plans. And here regardless of the learning mode, that the district will provide staffing, supports, and services and resources required to meet each child's individual needs as outlined in his or her individual education program or their 504 plan. So Student Services considered these four elements for both students in special education and 504 plans. We considered the health and safety of the students. We considered their engagement in learning. We considered their social emotional health. And we considered equality versus equity. And if you look at that illustration, if we provide equality, that does not give equal access for all students. So some students, in order to be provided equity, will need more supports than others. So we're looking at the hybrid model. That is a combination of face-to-face learning along with online learning. Classroom assignments and service delivery schedules for students with disabilities will be created so that they receive services consistent with their IEPs and 504 plans in the least restrictive environment. Schedules of classes, services, and therapies must include time spent interacting directly with teachers and related service providers consistently, as well as some independent work time as appropriate and opportunities for interacting with classmates. IEPs and 504 plans include accommodations to enable the students to access learning, whether face-to-face or remotely. IEP and 504 plan accommodations, like services, are highly individualized and student-specific. Learning plans to address synchronous and asynchronous remote lessons and related therapies will be developed for students receiving direct as well as inclusion services. Students already identified as high needs through the IEP process on the IEP form entitled Primary Disability/Level of Need will attend school four days. Students already identified as high needs through the IEP process on the IEP form entitled Primary Disability and Level of Need, they will receive the four days of instruction. These students who are qualified as such must meet at least two of the following three criteria. The services must be provided out of the general education classroom. Service providers are special education teachers and related service providers. And/or special education services constitute more than 75% of the student's school day. Now in addition, we have added the following. Students who primarily use aided and augmentative communication, which is devices for students who are non-verbal. Students who are duly identified as English learners as well as special education students. And students who are unable to access remote learning due to their disability based on spring data collected during remote learning by the student's teachers. In terms of remote learning, if students are solely doing remote learning, each student will have an individualized remote learning plan as they did in the spring. And this will be developed in conjunction with family input to address any services, accommodations, and modifications that will be provided differently. The model will include a proposed schedule that includes synchronous and asynchronous lessons as well as related services. Asynchronous activities and project-based learning will be individually developed and provided through Google Classroom to address the differences in pedagogy and modifications for IEP students on IEPs, as well as accommodations and instructional materials for students who are on IEPs or 504 plans. Grid B services, which apply to an IEP, will be delivered in conjunction with general and special education staff with breakout sessions as needed. Grid C services will be provided by special education staff as delineated in the individualized remote learning plan. Progress monitoring and data collection in regards to a student's IEP goals and objectives and/or a student's 504 plan will be used to inform instruction. Consultations between staff for students who are on 504 plans or IEPs will be regularly scheduled and recorded on a template. Finally, we will be looking at parent training and communication. Students, the Student Service Department will work closely with CPAC to provide parent training and supports on various topics. Parents will be surveyed to determine what types of training they would find more useful, whether we go a hybrid model or remote learning model. Learning plans and individualized remote plans will contain contact information for all service providers a student may have. Service providers will have regular communication with parents that will be delineated in the remote learning plan or their learning plan as determined jointly by the staff and parent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Potts. At this time, I'd like to call Assistant Superintendent Angelica of the Remote Learning Academy. Great.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your attention. It's hard to believe that this is a summary. It's, it's a big plan. So from the data we received from Superintendent Gallagher's survey over the summer, they told us that there were going to be some families that wanted to opt for a full remote learning plan for their child, no matter what the decision was about the plan moving forward in the district. So we started to research what our options might be around a full remote learning plan for our students. And if you recall, I think at our last school committee meeting, I was talking to you about looking forward to getting more information about the plan that the state was going to offer to support school districts around full remote learning. And once we learned more about those plans, we realized that those were not going to be viable options for our students in Newburyport. So we started to think about building our own. And we're very excited about where we landed with this and what we're going to be able to offer to our students. So the remote, we call it the Remote Learning Academy. The role of Remote Learning Academy is like a small school within our school district. And it is designed for those families who have opted for full remote learning for their children this year. It's going to operate as its own entity, but students can enroll in and out of the academy as the year goes on. It was developed by the district curriculum team administrators and technology integration specialists. It will be led by one of our district curriculum coordinators. And it will be taught by experienced Newburyport teachers, teachers who regularly develop quality educational programming for our students and who are also familiar with our Newburyport school culture. It will operate under regular school hours, between the hours of 8 to 3 for grades 1 to 8. Our kindergarten students will attend a half-day similar to that in our hybrid model, about three hours. As I said, we're going to, enrollment is a little bit difficult for something like this because we're making plans for what's happening in the hybrid model of the classroom as well as making plans for what will be happening in the Remote Learning Academy. And part of that planning is around the amount of students that we have in cohorts in the classroom, around the amount of teachers that we have teaching in the academy. So we need to keep, we have to put some parameters around when students can enroll in and out. So we decided the best way to do that was to look at it as trimester enrollment, which would happen at the beginning of the year. And our first trimester goes until mid-December. And the second trimester starts in December to mid-March. And then that one would follow through the end of the year. Of course, there's going to be exceptions to rules. There always are. But that's the guidance that we're going to use for the enrollment around the academy. We're trying our very best to align the curriculum of the academy to that of the classrooms. However, some of what's going to happen in the classroom is going to build off of the in-person time that the teachers have with the students. So it won't be identical because we won't be able to replicate that time that the students who are coming in in the hybrid model have in-person with the teacher. However, we are going to do our very best to keep the learning that is happening in the remote academy in line with that that's happening in the, in the hybrid model across the district, across the district. So there may be some resources that aren't identical, but many of them are very similar. People have asked about building a sense of community with the students that are in the remote academy. And that is as much a priority for us in the remote academy as it is in our hybrid model in the school. So social, a social emotional health is central to, to our planning, whether it be in the hybrid model, whether it be an in-person model, or whether it is in our remote academy. Again, you'll see the jargon that you've heard everybody talk about. There will be some synchronous learning. There will be some asynchronous learning. There will be some independent learning. But you've heard many of the principals talk about the professional development that our teachers have been doing over the summer. And they have spent many, many, many hours building robust curriculum for a hybrid model and innovative instructional practices that they can put in place for our students. That's a massive shift from what remote learning looked like in the spring. We're really excited to put some of those things in place. We will be using assessment tools that are aligned to the assessment tools that we'll be using in the classroom. Students in the remote academy will also be graded. Their recording systems will be in alignment with those of the Newburyport public schools. We're going to work hard to try to stay on target with the scope and sequence of what is happening in the classroom so that if we do have a student who at the end of the semester decides that they want to move to the model that's happening in the classroom, they're not going to lose ground or be at a different place than where the students are in the regular classroom. And then lastly, our students who are on IEPs, as Nancy just spoke about, will have individual remote learning plans written. And the services of the plans, within those plans, will really determine if the academy is the most appropriate placement for that student. Because we are fully committed to meeting the needs of our students who are on IEPs or 504s. And so we really need to look at the students on an individual basis and see which model is going to be most appropriate. If this one fits, a student services amount would be great. We're going to have a special education teacher as a part of the remote academy. But if we need to think about a different model to meet the students' needs, then we will be back too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Beck. I just would also, before we move on to the closure here, you know, the, I think we're all extremely bothered and disgusted by the Zoom bomb. So just doing a lot of work around trying to bring a community together. You know, obviously this person came in probably from outside Newburyport, but it just shows you the work we're, we're doing right now in addressing race and treating people with dignity and respect. And Newburyport is going to be a no-leak, no-leak place. And that's something we're, we're working on extremely, extremely hard. So that, I think this really threw us all off. So. But I really wanted to just go back to, to our plan. And this, I think for the, the community and for all of us, this is a UCA environment. And this is really came through, through the military and conditions on the ground constantly change. And some business models also use this. But this is the environment that, that we're in as educators, as communities, as leaders, trying to keep, I think, people together and really focused. You know, as I said at the beginning, we're talking about an active virus. An active virus that still, from the healthcare professionals, keeps changing on their end. About people that carry, about the long-term illnesses. A lot of these things, we still don't know. So when we're making decisions, this, this is the decision-making process that, that we're all in. And if we look at time of making these decisions and reopening schools, March 13th, going back when it all started, March 13th, we called school off and our teachers worked on one day on a Friday to create lessons. And at the time, we shut down, the North Shore superintendent shut down for we thought was going to be a two-week period around COVID and the virus. And at the time, we were told, no grades, no attendance, and just learning opportunities for students. Then the governor came in a few days later and he shut down the state for three weeks. And really had the same guidance, no grades, no evaluation. We should be back soon. Then April 21st, school closure up until May. So another, you're going to close, but now we want you to start looking at possible credit and no credit. And then until May, we found out we're shutting down for the rest of the year. And then we had modified curriculum. We had complete credits and no credits at that time. On June 5th was the first time the state had a conference call about PPEs and said to all the superintendents, you need to buy PPEs on June 5th. Our district with Steve Burkhom and Kathy Rigio started ordering our PPEs in March because we knew things were going to be a little bit different in the fall. On June 25th, and also on June 5th, summer school initial guidance came out if you were going to try to run an in-person summer school program. June 25th was the initial fall guidance. So the initial fall guidance was kind of guidance, but don't start planning on the fall, initial fall guidance because the real guidance is going to come out in July. July 17th, we received start and stop protocols guidance from the state. July 22nd, we received guidance regarding transportation and also facilities. On July 24th, we received even more guidance. On July 31st, we had to create three plans and really do a feasibility study of the whole school operations. And on July, after July 31st, on August 10th, a school district had to come up with a plan to move forward. Then the commissioner recognized that a lot of this work and there's a lot of contingencies and then created till August 14th. 14th. So with opening up a school that we've done, I've done for many years, over 20-some years as an administrator and part of 13 years as a teacher, just opening up the school district, when you have all these factors planned out, when you have constant knowing what to expect, is extremely difficult. But for us, in operating in this UCF environment, so when you look at volatility, it's the rate of change. Well, what's our rate of change? It's fast and furious. When you look at uncertainty, well, what are we uncertain about? Well, we're unclear about the present, which is now, and we're unclear what the next three weeks, which is going to happen. And when you look at uncertainty with the medical professionals, with what's the impact of this virus? Is it going to come back? Is it not going to come back? Well, the long-term health conditions for people, they're uncertain. And then the complexity. So when you think of a school district and you're operating and opening up a building from whatever it is, 7:30 in the morning to 4 o'clock in the afternoon, whatever that's going to affect with a hybrid in-person, the complexity of students from ages three to students ages 18 with various academic backgrounds, various health backgrounds, various family backgrounds, it's a very complex situation for us. And I think we're looking at is the ambiguity. And that's a lack of clarity around the meaning of the event. So when you look at that, that can lead to mistrust, demands, and really stifle the ability to be flexible and agile during this unpredictable environment that we're all working in. And I think for us, that's something that we really need to understand. So our situation is not constant. Situation right now, August 17th, is not going to be the same situation in the next few weeks. And this is why, when we're talking about this reopening plan, it's a transition plan. Number one goal from the beginning of the presentation was to bring our students in person in a safe, secure environment where we can make those connections. And it definitely looks different almost at every grade level. But the ultimate piece for us is to bring people in with success, to create a safe environment where people feel comfortable, and to create and build off of that. So reopening of schools in September is not going to probably look like it's going to at the end of June. It's going to probably look a lot different. But for us and our community, in operating in this complexity of challenges, I really believe we really need to stay together. And we really need to work together and do what's best for all students and all teachers and all staff. Next slide. So as we're looking at our path forward, so I think in this sector of environment, the organization must call on experienced leaders to simplify the complexity, short through the ambiguity, and define the uncertainties. And I think for us, by bringing a lot of the different people to the table, this is an ongoing continuation of the next 10 months. So we really relied on our public health and our operation experts, especially in the beginning, when task one is to open with success and open with safety. Because not only just talking about the physical safety of our students, there was a social emotional task force that was put together with some child psychologists and some other medical personnel that were really looking at the mental aspects of reintroducing school to students and staff. Our school system is going to look a lot different. So in March, when we closed, there was the collaboration, there was group work, there was beautiful posters and artwork in the classes, there was various seating in the class. At the elementary level, there's little bean bags, little chairs, little rocking chairs. All of those things under the virus, which is dictating how we operate, all of that non-essential furniture is taken out of the classroom. All of those bean bags, those little comforters taken out of the classroom. All those little cubbyholes, all those individual little things that we do for students is taken out. So when you walk into a school, our school in the fall, you're going to have desks and you're going to have a teacher's station. And those desks can be six feet apart. And those students are going to be wearing masks. And those students are going to have to follow six feet throughout the entire day. The hugs, the high fives, the great jobs, that physical contact that we have with staff and students, all of that is gone away. So when we talk with the public health experts and we talk about the mental health and how school is going to look a lot different from March than it is in September, we need that transition time. So it's not just, well, we'll just separate, you know, people, do this, and we can just go and teach. There's a big, big piece of that. So in Newbury Ford, which I think I've been blessed, the people that we're getting our guidance from, it's not just the commissioner and his regulations. We have chief operating officers that have run and created protocols for hospitals in Boston. We have an epidemiologist working out of Harvard, and you all know, and the work that she's been doing and working with us, that's writing reports, a doctor publishing. We have PhD nurses, we have pediatrics, we have HAVC specialists working with Steve about the ventilation system. There's many, many parents that are involved assisting us with that number one goal, the health and safety of our staff and students, reintroducing them to schools with a phasing-in process. Idea is to get everyone comfortable. And then our educators. So for us, we take the medical experience, get suggestions, give us information, and then the educator's expertise is to create those schedules and those guidance. So we can operationalize that guidance as we reopen schools. And the other thing that's been very critical for us is our students and parents sharing their stories about the spring remote learning, asking them how we can do things better. So from the spring to now, we're talking about live streaming into a classroom. We're talking about making the connections in the hybrid model five days a week. And that wasn't what we thought of. That was getting direct input from parents and students. Next slide. So just in the conclusion, this plan reflects hours of work by an entire community. It's really just a place we stopped. We're talking about reopening schools in September in a safe way that people are comfortable coming back. It's also, when we're looking at the COVID environment, we really need to understand this is fluid. So when we say that, it's new health data that comes forward. And really, for all of us to understand, we're dealing with an active virus at the highest level, medical level, is unpredictable. We do know certain things. Those health protocols that we're following right now from every health professional, those will help. So that's a positive. But all the other medical information out there is also dynamic and it also changes. And we need to be, have the ability to adapt. Focus on prioritizing in-person learning and drawing the health guidelines. So it's the health guidelines dealing with the virus that is dictating a lot of our operations. And then the last piece is communicate with clear, consistent messaging. And I think that that's a challenge for us, because as we change and as we're receiving more and more information, that's something that we all really got to understand, that that's difficult, that's difficult sometimes when we have to make fast decisions regarding so many people in the, in the complex. So I think that's all I have for everybody. I just, once again, in the task force that has met, just so people understand, we broke that off into several different areas. We had a district focus, we had health and curriculum focus, we had obviously health and safety focus, social emotional focus, a special education focus, and a facilities focus. So we were having those whole group meetings. Our last meeting, we weren't bringing the whole group together. But as I said to those task force members, once a decision is made, and once we need to start to move forward, we have all of those names and support that will be part of creating the detailed plans from now to the opening of school. So once again, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank our administration. And I just feel, as we were saying, this gives us the opportunity to pivot to want students back. And it gives us an opportunity to pivot if we need to go remote. So thank you all very much.
I'm not exactly sure. And I would ask Brian and Don to let me know, what are the logistics of being able to identify people? Just hand raise?
Public comment should be fine, right, Don? Public comment should be okay to go?
Well, what I would like to do, before we do that, I would like to be able to sort of lay out what the ground rules and expectations are.
Comment, sure?
Sure, yeah. And they're not, they're not really any different than any other public comment that we've had in all the years I've been on the school committee. We do ask people to be as direct as they can and try to limit their comments to two minutes. And that, I think, is especially keen tonight. We have 90 people out there. If each of them had two minutes, that's more than two and a half hours here. And our goal is to hear every public comment from every individual. So in trying to make this work, I would ask people not to be redundant. If you agree with something that was said before you, just simply state what your agreement is. If you have new information that hasn't been shared, that you want to share, please feel free to share that. If you have a comment to make that hasn't been made before, please share that. But again, if you agree with what people who have gone before you said, then just tell us that. There are, there's a lot of passion around a number of ideas that we've brought forward in the plan. And I would make the request that I usually make, that we comport ourselves with civility. And I'm going to define civility as not trashing individuals or groups of people. That's really, we need to be talking respectfully. And that's about, that's, those are the rules, and they're the same rules that we have each time. With that, I'm ready to open up public comment. We would ask, we would also ask people, actually, yeah, we would also ask people to give us their name and their address for the record, which is something else we do in public comment. And I would turn it over to the mayor at this point.
Thank you, Bruce. At this point, before we open it up generally to public comment, we would like to give the city councilors an opportunity to raise their hand first and to be recognized.
Do you have the city councilors who are...
Well, they should just raise their hand if they want to speak. Yes.
So I have the city councilors.
I'm showing any city councilors that I see. Okay, I see Councilor Byron Lane. Would you like to speak?
I'm all set for it, Don. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, councillor. I saw Councilor Khan is here. Would you like to speak? Councilor President Igerman, would you like to speak?
Don, do you have to unmute them, or can they unmute themselves?
I invited them to unmute.
Okay.
Okay, Councilor Shan, are you there? Would you like to speak?
Yes. I just want to thank everyone for all the effort they put in this summer to pull this package together, pull comprehensive plan, pull getting students back in the classroom, and a safe and effective manner. So just thank you all for all your effort here. That's it.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor Khan, did you want to speak? Councilor Khan, did you want to speak?
Yes, I, hi, yeah, sorry, I was muted. So first of all, yes, I just want to, again, same as Councilor Shan said, I do want to thank the administration leadership team of the faculty members on their efforts. I do know this is a unprecedented effort, and we are trying to meet educational needs across different schools. I think we could agree that remote learning in spring, you know, for me personally, I have an incoming freshman at the high school and an incoming sixth grader at the middle school. So this is definitely something I've been paying attention to for the last few months. And I think we can all agree that remote learning in spring was really, really difficult for all of us, students and parents alike. And many of us, unfortunately, our remote learning experience has really been shaped by what happened in spring, and we don't want to see that repeated. But with that said, the reopening plans presented tonight were thoroughly done with some considerations, I think, on some of that experience. And I know we're trying to balance a myriad of complex issues. Now, sophisticated remote learning tools, which we've heard about, as well as learning appropriate etiquette, is an ongoing education. And I know it's going to be an ongoing kind of feedback that I'm hoping can happen between the administration as well as parents and students. So for me personally, the hybrid model is one that helps us navigate through some of the uncharted pathways in a manner that I think can be responsive to all future COVID findings and trends. And I think it allows us to pivot to either the full remote or an in-person transition. So for me personally, and I will say also talking to my incoming high schooler, to grasp a false start that would be done remotely, only what was hard to digest. And again, I talk about two-way communication being critical to a successful model. Now, personally, I would have liked to have seen the hybrid approach, but the presentation that was done today to the students by the high school did present a flexible, based in approach that does include in-person student interaction with teachers and also for other students through clubs and activities. And I found that very encouraging. So I thank everyone here for what you've done to prepare these plans. And I do think as a community, we can all come together and only get stronger through support, communication, and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Councilor Tantar?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I have to say, I have my own biases. And having taught for 40 years, I never looked very fond of remote teaching. I certainly did not want to do it myself. I did hybrid. However, there are some circumstances where it's extremely beneficial. States like Nebraska, Mexico, where some students would have no education if they could not come in remotely. And I just kind of think of this circumstance as being somewhat similar to this. It's not geographic distance, but the virus has created conditions that make it difficult to have in-class learning. And so although I have to admit, so many of my friends who have adopted remote teaching over the last, it's the best of the column level I have. So the more you do it, the better you get at it. So I don't want to judge that too much. The question I have, and I think that is going to be a question a lot of people ask, is given the fact that the governor said the communities that have low, relatively low viral prevalence, such as we have, should open. The question I have, when he says open, does that mean that, what, three feet distance? Does that mean some sort of contact tracing that would be done? In particular, does that mean some sort of testing for all the students? So if you could do testing, if you could do physically find... do physically find a place where you could be three feet apart, if everyone's wearing masks, would you reconsider? Or, have you concluded that the threat of the virus is such that, and with all those masks and distancing and everything else, have you concluded that the starting out with, at the high school in particular, with the remote learning, is educationally superior to go in person with masks and everything else? So, I guess, one real question, will it be in testing? Because I kind of missed it in reading the document. And then secondly, that second question is, what's educationally superior, given this committee? Thank you.
I could start with the testing. We had a call with Anna Jakes Hospital and Mark Goldstein, and they have agreed to treat our teachers as first responders, as they did early on with testing. We have a school physician who can help in terms of ordering those tests. Obviously, we want to try and do testing as quickly as possible. If there has been any situation where we know that there has been exposure, students would have to work with their primary care physicians and arrange for their testing. Because unfortunately, it would be wonderful if we could do testing at home on a daily basis, but we're just, you know, we just aren't there in terms of the technology. So, I think that we're fortunate the hospital will work with us. We're fortunate to have a community hospital here that can help us with those particular pieces. And I'm going to leave it to the superintendent or Principal Wolf to talk about your question regarding the, you know, decisions around going remote initially versus having students in the high school.
Right. And I think the, you know, we have Kathy Ricchio out here, too. But I think the metrics that were sent out, there's two things. We have to do a feasibility study with three-foot distancing throughout in every classroom. There's many difficulties with that, with three-foot spacing, especially around lunch and other aspects of eating, because the other piece is there's guidelines around that. So, when the governor says, you know, everyone should be back full in person, we also have CDC guidelines and different guidelines that we need to adhere to. So, it's very challenging. Even with, the three-foot distancing was our first feasibility study through all the buildings, it created a lot of problems where you could not follow the basic safety guidelines that are being recommended. Like, for example, one of the guidelines is you need six-foot distancing for a mask break. You need six-foot distancing if you're going to eat, drink, you know, a sip of water. With that being said, you would not be able to do any of those things with a three-foot distance. And there's a lot of other, I mean, the guidance that comes out around that, city councillor, is there's a lot of different aspects to that when you're looking at the guidelines. So, it's, if the guidelines were lifted and you didn't have to follow the safety protocols that are in place, you know, I just think it's almost like a catch-22. So, I think he was more referring to a hybrid model in the sense of bringing students back. And then, I also believe, depending, you know, this is a fluid, you know, condition in the sense that, who knows? Maybe in October, maybe we know there's not going to be a cure or a vaccine, but maybe some of the therapeutics that they're working on, that if people do come in contact, or a therapeutic that might be more preventative down the road comes into play, then we can start looking at that. But with the guidelines that are in place, it's really, it's really challenging. I mean, right now, we have, you know, with the guidance, we have twenty-five in a public meeting right now. So, those are some of the challenges. And I'm not sure if Kathy Ricchio, if you wanted to just say a couple of things on the guidance regarding that, the CDC guidance, and it's, I think it's that mic. Ms. Ricchio?
Yeah. Well, I think it's important to remember that when you're always making decisions with public health, you have all your populations in mind. And you're constantly thinking about worker health and safety. You're thinking about your student health and safety. And then you're also being very mindful of the science behind the virus and the fact that we are still learning about that virus. That's the latest information that's come out from the CDC. Some recommendations that you put in place longstanding public health mitigation factors, and I've been doing this for forty years, for heaven's sakes, and if you put in longstanding public health mitigation factors, then we can provide a safer environment so that we don't hopefully have to go back and forth, that we can have a sustainable environment that people feel confident in. And that's our goal. And I don't know if I answered the question, but there we are.
If I could just add one thing, and this is something that I've noticed for some time. The guidance from the state encouraged all districts to go with six feet. Three feet was acceptable if you were willing to accept what that meant. What that meant was a virtual lockdown. What that meant was, you know, not being able to have a sip of water in your classroom. And what that meant was, you know, a greater risk. And our conversation around whether to go with six feet or three feet had to do with, first off, it is, the state does recommend, they encourage six feet. And we talked with our epidemiologists, our hospital people, and they felt that six feet was the safer way to go. But again, the state, the state did encourage us, encourage all districts to go with six feet, and said three feet was acceptable, but it doesn't really feel acceptable to us, to the people who are experts as well.
Thank you, Bruce.
Can I ask the mayor a question about the testing? Is it going to be local for students? It sounds like they may end up having to go to Lawrence to get their testing if their doctor is calling it in?
Well, that's something we'll have to work on with Kathy Ricchio.
Sorry, I didn't get it.
She wants to know if students will be able to get tested locally. I think that depends on access to testing, where testing sites are set up. Because I know that they have limited capacity at Anna Jakes and the number of supplies they have. But they said they would be willing to test teachers fairly quickly. So, that was very...
So, that is the question of the hour. You know, I really thought that we'd have more robust testing available even today. But actually, more is coming. I've heard from a couple of different practices that they're looking at purchasing some of the materials. They won't be able to get them, they didn't think, until October. But I have heard from some pediatric practices where they're going to be investing in some of this technology. And I do think that, I do think that we're going to have some more testing options available for our families in our area. And it's great Mayor Holliday put together the meeting with the president of Anna Jakes Hospital, so that we're going to be able to support our staff, too. So, we'll keep you posted.
I know. I think it's a great question. I think that's been one of the biggest concerns, is we don't have enough testing at this point. But, you know, and labs currently are backlog for ten, fourteen days, so you might as well just quarantine, right? So, we're hopefully be able to move that along this fall, too. But great question. Thank you, Sheila. I see councillor Devlin has been patiently waiting.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Joe Devlin, Council of Large. I had great expectations from the meeting tonight, which was originally going to be a joint city council, school committee meeting. Loved the idea of bringing all elected representatives into one room, parents, school administrators, to review and refine, you know, the task force that satisfied, you know, everybody involved, parents, school employees, most supportive kids. I've got too many questions about the process and the resulting plan to fit it in two minutes. And without answering those questions, I don't know enough about the process to, to guide us here to align about the efficacy of the reopening plan. I agree with my fellow councillors who spoke before me. It does appear that a lot of hard work went into this. There was a detailed reopening plan and detailed presentation where, you know, people prepared for that, and they were obviously ready. Some of my questions are going to get answered during the budget process, when the school budget becomes before us. But I think some of them would help to frame this discussion tonight for parents and administrators, and brought clarity to the process, at least for me and some of the parents I spoke to. I do think a lot could have been done to publicize the process and get feedback and buy-in from as many people as possible as the plan developed. I realize the task force was attempting to do this, but more can always be done to get as much participation as possible. One thing I would like to touch on specifically is the high school plan. To me, it seems incongruous to the rest of the reopening plan, especially to the group of kids that are most able to socially distance and follow the safety protocol. Purely, I can't say that a hybrid plan is out of left field or inappropriate at this time, obviously. We're facing unprecedented times. But it seems by default, we haven't made any progress about in-person learning from the spring. And touching on the superintendent's comments that goes down to this presentation, you know, we've made progress on our understanding of this virus, and we've made understand, we've made progress on the difficulties of remote learning. And I would just think that we would want to try, and there are very, very few, and we have made huge strides and do great work to contain this virus, and there are very few cases here now. So, my question is, if we don't do this now, starting in high school, even in the third of the group classes going, or one grade going once a week, you know, I don't know if we'll ever do it until, you know, the virus is eliminated as a threat. So, you know, that for me is where the plan falls a little bit short. And I, from what I've heard, you know, from the presentation, that question hasn't been answered. But anyway, those are my thoughts, and I look at freedom for listening to everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Devlin. And if you still would like to submit your questions to Superintendent Gallagher and the school committee, please do, and we will try to answer them. Because I think that as we move forward, these are questions that need to be answered, you know. Councillor Connell, are you there?
All right. Should I ask Igerman again?
What?
I think Jared's still there. Maybe he couldn't...
Councillor Igerman, are you there? Councillor Zee?
Yeah, who's on? Yeah, it's right there. There you go.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize. I was muted, but I was unmuted. So, thank you for recognizing me. I hope that all of you are well this evening. I have some comments I'd like to run through, and I did try and keep them as short as possible, which is most folks know is difficult for me. So, I am, you know, I wanted to start maybe by echoing a part of councillor Devlin's comment. I am really frustrated that we were not able to have a joint meeting. This is an issue that, you know, every elected official has a deep stake in. And frankly, the council is going to talk about this at length during the budget process. And I thought that this would offer an opportunity to work collaboratively instead of working in different pieces. And I fully respect the, you know, the position of the school committee and the charge of the school committee, and that you, of course, are elected officials as well. It's just an opportunity to work together. And I wanted to say publicly and for the record that I didn't support the cancellation of the joint meeting, or who I understand why agenda considerations and task considerations couldn't have been worked out between the two bodies. I do have a sharp opinion about the reopening plan and the antibiotics process, and, you know, I am here to advocate, so I will do that now. And I'm asking school committee members, there are seven of you, to really please tonight resist any suggestions that this plan can't be changed, amended, severed, or in any way really materially changed. We have a school committee for a reason. They're elected for a reason, and this process exists for a reason. And that has come up with the best possible outcome. And having things brought to you in a sort of phase where effectively you're told that no changes can be made, in my opinion, is not accurate. There, resist, you refuse any suggestion that somehow the plan doesn't get passed, that all of a sudden a handle will drop upon us, and all students in all grades will have to go remote. I don't believe that's the case at all. Please resist any suggestion that we can pass this now and work the details out later. And please resist any suggestion that the state's going to punish us. They seem to be making it up as they go along, just as we all are during these challenging times. As a city councillor, I've witnessed this same process happen a number of times, and it doesn't feel collaborative. It doesn't feel inclusive. The task force meetings were certainly appreciated. Those meetings were never posted. I never was able to attend or listen to any of them. A draft plan is far from over. It was never brought to the task force for their consideration, and plans were submitted to the state still that have never been seen. I still yet to receive a copy of the three documents that were supposedly sent to DESI. Secondly, and sharply, I'm asking you to vote now on the plan as proposed. As most of you know, or all of you know, fully, I wrote you a six-page letter describing where I stand. Unfortunately, I didn't hear back from several members, but it is what it is. I'll let the letter stand for itself in terms of the details of my concerns and ideas to try and resolve those concerns. As far as I'm concerned from my position, from where I sit, the plan doesn't really represent the best you can do. And there's still work to be done. Doesn't mean that the work that has been done is not valuable, not appreciated. But how can a plan that seems to have so little buy-in from so many stakeholders be accepted? I am pleased to hear the superintendent recognize tonight that remote learning is inherently less effective than in-person. It always has been, and it always will be. And so, no matter how well executed, which of course is the major goal of ours, and, you know, remote learning is always below in-person learning. We really can't, you know, let, you know, issues like, well, the students can't eat lunch be a major impediment to us getting as many students into schools as possible. I please, I beg you, this is the plan. This is the time for the details. This is the plan that will almost certainly cover the entire school year and possibly next school year and beyond. You know, the plan has a lot of ideas in it, which are appreciated. There's also a lot of the word "may," "might," "could," "maybe." We all, residents, taxpayers, teachers, students, need and deserve a concrete plan. And just keep in mind, from the public's perspective, this is the first meeting about this on a plan that came out last Tuesday. And there's no fault in that of following DESI's guidelines and timelines, which frankly, they were laid on, too. But please understand when you listen to the public that this is basically their only opportunity to discuss something that's going to impact their kids for an entire school year. Last comment I'd like to make, and, you know, councillor Devlin touched on this briefly, and I believe councillor Tantar as well, I am truly at a loss as to what public health metrics we're looking at in order to support our decisions. I think most people recognize, you know, we're on the map as a community with low virus load. We've got our own metrics to look at. We've got two cases in the last fourteen days. We've got a 0.3% positivity rate. It's very difficult to envision numbers getting better than the near-zero numbers that we have today. So, it's somewhat mind-boggling to me that after months of sacrifice across the community in order to achieve these numbers, it doesn't end up leading to what I think many people regard as one of the most important things, which is education. We have dealt with restaurants. Restaurants are open. We've dealt with downtown. We figured out ways, as a state and as a municipality, to deal with those things. And yet, we're staring down the plan here that, while fifty-two pages is, you know, is a little bit difficult to sort of logic through and understand. So, I'm asking you, please, to consider these points for tonight, and ultimately, at least that the plan is brought to a vote, that's evidence effective, to vote on it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, councillor. I just would like to clarify one point you made several times. This is not the...
So, I mean, it is just, I mean, I think it's a fair, fair point to ask. If that's what we're going to try to add tonight, I think that's great.
But I think that's what was said by Andrew Wolf.
Well, where? When he said early October?
When he spoke tonight.
Okay, I mean, I'm just saying.
He said a couple of weeks to get the kids back in. I think each of the principals did make mention of bringing the kids back in as soon as possible to move more in that direction.
But we have no plan.
There's no plan for that though. Like, there's no timeline.
No, I understand. Can we wait till we've made to do this?
No, that's fine. I just, you decided to comment on what he said. I just, I think he's got a fight though. There is nothing written down. That's all.
Do I have other councilors who would like to speak that I might have missed? Okay. Then Bruce, I'm going to turn it over to you to manage the rest of public comment.
I think we should probably go with folks who have their hands raised. Just run down those.
Ready?
Yep. Gene, if you could identify yourself and give us your address, that would allow us to put you into the record. And then if you could, again, hold your comments close to two minutes, that would be appreciated.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, very well.
Thank you. My name is Gene Novak. I live at 161 Nolan Boulevard on the Arnold Mall Plumb. My wife Carol and I are somewhere new to Newburyport School District. We have a son that's heading into high school this final year. So first of all, let me thank all here for your hard work and diligence. As I said, we're new here, so we've been super impressed with everybody, from the teachers to the principals, administrators. I think you do a superb job and you've been very impressed with Newburyport School System. The reason why I'm here today is basically to show my support for full 100% return to classroom for the students for a variety of reasons, which I won't go into all of them. But I did want to point out one thing that I think is important that is being missed or may have been missed here. A lot of talk was brought up about the CDC guidelines and how we need the three-foot and six-foot social distancing. There's a online course that's free for anybody who wants to take it from John Hawkins University. It's specifically in regards to this pandemic or experiencing now. So the idea that we can't meet the three-foot or six-foot, I think, may be misunderstood because there's a tiny element to that equation. For instance, if I'm close to you for a very short period of time at the master line, that's okay, you'll within the guidelines if it's for, I think, less than 15 minutes. If you're in a room with in close proximity to certain people for several hours, if they're just associates in a certain type of working environment, that may be okay as well. So there's a tiny element involved in that equation. So I think we can meet those social guidelines. I know it's a fluid situation, I agree with most all of the comments that were made. However, I think it would be highly detrimental, and I only want to speak for nice on the high school, not for the kind of school of kindergarten, but I think for those students going into high school, that is critical, that they get back into classrooms as soon as possible. And I think people are watching school districts such as this to see what others are doing. And there's a lot of that we need here, but I think what I'd like to see happen is let's think outside the box a little bit and say, why don't we return to school based on the major methods as soon as possible, recognizing the challenges, recognizing it's a fluid situation, and be prepared to go to that hybrid or full remote if this fall gets bad, we're going to have a regular flow that might show up, so then you're going to have two different issues going on that could be challenging. So monitor.
If you could, if you could sum up, that would be great. There's a lot of people waiting.
And again, just go back to school and be prepared to change on a daily or weekly basis to go to something else if needed. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
And I thank you all very much. And thank you for hearing me.
Rich Rubino?
Good evening. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First question.
Give us your address.
Do you see any metric on here that would be a determination of when you would reopen the school fully? I'm sure you have one in mind. We are at almost zero already. I don't know what better we will be able to do over time. And I also heard just from the mayor a few minutes ago that this plan was only for a few weeks. What's the next plan? And when do we get to discuss that? So what's the metric for reopening? Do we have a real rate in mind? Has it been discussed? Has it been agreed upon? And what is the next plan that happens after the few weeks?
Thank you very much. Rich Rubino? Rich, do you have an address that you can give us?
Yes, 34 Francis Drive.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Richard.
Bruce? Yeah. Dr. Sue is on here. And she's working with us with that matrix. She might be able to speak to that, just in case there's a lot more questions on that.
It probably would make sense to have her step in. Is Dr. Sue? Jessica Sue, yes.
Yeah.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Dr. Sue. If you could just identify yourself for some of the public people who, hard to believe, but don't know who you are.
Yeah, my name is Jessica Sue. I'm an associate professor and epidemiologist at Harvard Medical School and Bridge of Orange Hospital. I've been working with the various members of the school to talk about various aspects of reopening in terms of the plan. When it comes to, you know, metrics for reopening, I will say one thing, which is, you are right, we are in a very low prevalent state. I think that comment, however, also needs to be balanced with particularly on the high school, when there's all sorts of other things that are at play in terms of the classrooms not really being designed to fully take the capacity of even a full, a hybrid model, that the hallways being too narrow, that the overall design of the hybrid protocol making it much more difficult to contact trace. And because of that, anxiety from staff and teachers about coming in lately, it is high, and that is a rational thing, that if there are concerns, because the safety protocols that we can implement there can just, they are not as stringent as we can implement in any of the other schools. So therefore, the idea is to start with a more conservative model for a few weeks. Now, what is the metric to change? The metric to change is if it stays the same, after a few weeks, we will transition to a hybrid model. So the metric doesn't mean we have to get better. It doesn't mean we have to get better. It means that we can show the teachers, we can show the faculty, the staff, the students, that in the context of a school that is not ideally suited and does not meet the parameters and the strict guidelines that we implemented in all the other schools, in that condition, knowing that it is not ideal and not as stringent in terms of safety protocols, can we get the students back to some degree? If we can get them back to some degree, as long as things stay the same, we would transition to a hybrid model. Now, the details of that model, you know, I will defer to Mr. Gallagher that, you know, discussed, because, you know, there are details there to be worked out, but I'll let him address that. But the idea behind starting conservatively was understanding the parameters of the school and anxieties because of those parameters being different than the other schools is to start conservatively. Now, I will note, when you look at other schools, even in Essex County, that has similar setups of schools, for example, Beverly, and several other high schools in the district, this is not a typical protocol of how to start, which is, we want to start with a lean, we want to start conservatively, we want to start with supporting the teachers and the voice needs of them to get everyone on the same page and show that we can have students and teachers in sight, on person, in some framework. If we can show that, as long as parameters stay the same, and we stay at the low positive rate we are now, opening up to a hybrid model is the best option, I think everyone would agree, for students, faculty, and the community. So we want to support that, we want to get the students back in. I think a few weeks of just demonstrating that it is possible in a building that is not ideally suited and where we can't put the protocols in place is a reasonable thing to do in the middle of a pandemic. We want to show that we can do things safely and not put anyone out.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. Next? Yeah, next.
Brendan Cooper?
Sure.
Brendan Cooper? Good evening. Are you okay?
Yeah, I can.
Hey, thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Brendan Cooper. I live at 510 Paul Drive. As the parent of two high school students, I'm here to say that I'm 100% in support of my team of reopening for in-person learning at all of our schools this September 16th on opening day. Since the initial task force of seven was created, I've done a lot of reading, interviewing, and questioning, leading up to tonight's meeting of a couple of things that are very clear to me. First, everyone at this meeting is working off of too many assumptions, particularly as it pertains to the technology preferedness of our schools for any form of remote or hybrid remote learning. Second, and most important, the high school is simply not going to be ready for any hybrid remote or remote-only learning. It will only be ready for in-person learning as it's always been. I recently met with one of these school principals. We discussed the preferedness of technology, and it's simply not there, nor are the teachers going to be ready to support it. It could be weeks, possibly months, until the technology is A, delivered to the school, B, installed and working properly, and C, everyone's trained to how to speed on how to use it. The plan is to eventually mimic what St. John's Prep has done for all of their classrooms. This takes time and investment, neither of which we have made, to be fully prepared for this school year. The first month of school at Menopem will be asynchronous learning, once again, which was a train wreck, I must have said this before in this meeting, to all students as it was last spring, a train wreck. For that reason, in addition to all others you've heard or about to hear, I beg you to do the right thing by voting for our schools to open for in-person attendance for all students who wish to be there, so long as those students are wearing masks at a three-foot, not a six-foot seating distance, and while allowing them to follow the rules by proper social distancing in the halls. Our governor, the CDC, and many prominent professional figures have all stated that so long as you follow these guidelines, there's no reason why our kids should not return back to school in a hybrid fashion at the very least. Just remember, those that don't want to be on campus, they have an option. Those that do want to be on campus have zero options to do so. I thank you for your time, your leadership, very valuable to us and important at this time and for our children's futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Shaw?
Hi, thank you. I'm Lynn Shaw. I'm general counsel and executive vice president at Nineteen Twenty Two Investment Company. I live at 75 High Street. I have four children. One is now just starting college, one at St. John's Prep, one at Newburyport High School, and one at the Nolan. I'd like to thank the school committee, the administration, and task force members for their efforts in finding a safe solution for getting our kids back to learning in the era of COVID-19. However, I'd also like to start by stating agreement with Councilors Zee and Brendan Cooper. The plan for the four of our district does not go far enough to getting our kids back to school in light of the current health situation in Newburyport. With a 0.3% positivity rate and nearly two active cases, Newburyport appears as an unshaven area on the governor's COVID-19 map. The recent guidance issued by the governor and Desi indicates that we should be going back in-person or hybrid in this standing waiting circumstances, such as perhaps what's been presented at the high school. Those families who want to attend remotely do so under any circumstances according to state laws. The CDC on July 23rd stressed that in-person learning is in the best interest of schoolchildren, especially in situations like the health situation of our community right now. Asynchronous remote learning does not work, we learn that in spray, especially for children with special needs. In addition to the high school in the district, I have a son on IEP, and not much makes me angrier than the statement here tonight that I'll be given asynchronous learning projects with my son and I'm training. I have that already most of the time that he's not in school with training professionals. He has a small window, small window to make progress, and he is wasting it. The district plan for the high school is fully remote. The plan for most of the lower grades is only 40% in-person. There is no discussion of why the new metrics provided by the governor are not being considered, and no metrics presented for when Newburyport Schools will open in-person. If Newburyport Schools can't open in-person with a 0.3% positivity rate, when can they go back? I urge the school committee to reject the proposed plan until it provides the metrics and set a plan with specificity for a safe reopening of the schools to full in-person learning, with a remote option for those families who want it, aligned with state recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Let's just run down a list. Timon's next?
Hello, I'm getting your name. Okay.
I live here.
Okay. Hello, my name is Luke Devon, and I teach night's grade world history at Alphabell School. And I wanted to, like, research with the center of these kids already. And my mom was actually related to this locally to what happened during student meetings earlier. A viral school is implicated in that the virus has been present for this meeting, and what all it is consistent with response to crises in this district. That is to say, characterfully Latin. Nothing was sent to the director's office, and 20 minutes later, a presenter had a transcript that raises an extremely important topic, and that would be acknowledging what happened to students prior. And in this case, that also appears to be our problem. We are on script, we have the right words, and we make up the appropriate gestures, but we're not even encouraged or on screen on crisis and bright front. It was the least we could have done to say, raise it on the greatest face as I can, and welcome, and that will address it later. And this is why I feel about the COVID crisis as well. As schools reopen and quickly close as the virus spiked, how can the whole school have as much in-person contact with teachers as possible, especially at high school? Instead of CTE, why are we providing teachers with portable materials to support that they need to deliver the quality of remote education that we are not supposed to provide to them? If consistency and lack of interaction and learning is our goal, remote access here on the show, our situation is predictable. People are opening buildings in both quarters, so is everything. If we reopen too soon, people will become horribly ill, and there's a chance that some people will die, and that is predictable. And lastly, I ask for honesty when we consider what we are working and future to do. And I use the word corporate to describe the relationship power here, because I don't have the option to stay home, and I can't afford to lose my job. Parents, this is for you. Lastly, in your call, for what you may think is what's best for your children, I ask you to remember that I am someone who has a child at school. My mom's a native student, she's 55, and I want to be able to see her. I also don't want her to become sick. And furthermore, I don't want her to ever have to care for me again, because I gave her plenty of stuff to do in 1998 without 2016. But I don't want her to have to take care of me if I am the one that wants to increase the number of young and healthy people who are getting terribly sick, suffering working damage, and more knows what long-term illness. I've heard it said that we are asking hospitals to consider us as first responders in regard to testing. I did not become a teacher since he told you to spray bottles and gloves. I hope you're good enough at cleaning to stay healthy or protect your students from contagion. But his mandate for us to share a building with a large group of our students, who I also believe in, you are telling me that you are...
Liv, can I ask you to summarize?
...in terms of my relationship, unless I can maintain, we do testing, I can see my family, or my tiny group of two or five friends.
Liv, can I ask you to summarize your point? And we have a number of people that are waiting.
But my last sentence is that we are all seven children, and I ask for courage and honesty in the school reopening plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dusette?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I beg you to do the right thing by wanting for our schools to open for in-person attendance for all students who wish to be there, so long as those students are wearing masks at a three-foot, not a six-foot seating distance, and while allowing them to follow the rules by proper social distancing in the halls. Our governor, the CDC, and many prominent professional figures have all stated that so long as you follow these guidelines, there's no reason why our kids should not return back to school in a hybrid fashion at the very least. Just remember, those that don't want to be on campus, they have an option. Those that do want to be on campus have zero options to do so. I thank you for your time, your leadership, very valuable to us and important at this time and for our children's futures. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Shaw?
Hi, thank you. I'm Lynn Shaw. I'm General Counsel and Executive Vice President at 1922 Investment Company. I live at 75 High Street. I have four children. One is now just starting college, one at St. John's Prep, one at Newbury Court High School, and one at the Moulton. I'd like to thank the school committee, the administration, and task force members for their efforts in finding a safe solution for getting our kids back to learning in the era of COVID-19. However, I'd also like to start by stating agreement with Counselors Zee and Brendan Cooper. The plan so forth by the district does not go far enough to get our kids back to school in light of the current health situation in Newbury Court. With a 0.3% positivity rate and nearly two active cases, Newbury Court appears as an unshaven area on the governor's COVID-19 map. The recent guidance issued by the governor and Desi indicates that we should be going back in-person or hybrid in disenterting circumstances, such as perhaps what's been presented at the high school. Those families who want to attend remotely do so under any circumstances according to state laws. The CDC, on July 23rd, stressed that in-person learning is in the best interests of schoolchildren, especially in situations like the health situation of our community right now. Asynchronous remote learning does not work. We learn that in the spring, especially for children with special needs. In addition to the high school in the district, I have a son on IEP, and not much makes me angrier than the statement here tonight that I'll be given asynchronous learning projects with my son and on training. I have that already most of the time that he's not in school with training professionals. He has a small window, small window to make progress, and he was wasting it. The district plan for the high school is fully remote. The plan for most of the lower grades is only 40% in-person. There is no discussion of why the new metrics provided by the governor are not being considered, and no metrics presented for when Newbury Court's schools will open in-person. If Newbury Court schools can't open in-person with a 0.3% positivity rate, when can they go back? I urge the school committee to reject the proposed plan until it provides metrics and a set plan with specificity for a safe reopening of the schools to full in-person learning with a remote option for those families who want it, in line with state recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Let's just run that list over. Timon's next?
Hello. I'm getting your name. Okay.
I live here.
Okay. Hello, my name is Lynn Shaw. I'm a deep connect for Newbury Court History Academy School. And I wanted to, like, reiterate something that we've seen already. And my mom was actually related very closely to what happened during three speeches earlier. A vile school is humiliating, that is vile in its face, and that's worth repeating. And what politics is this that will respond to two crises in this district? That is to say, character-based Latin. Nothing is said to address moments, and 20 minutes later, a presenter had a transcript that raises an extremely important topic, if that would be acknowledging what happened a few minutes prior. And in this case, that also appears to be our problem. We are on the grid, we have the right words, and we make the appropriate gestures, but we're not even encouraged or on the grid when crisis is right in front of us. It was the least we could have done to say racism and racism is a fact that is unwelcome and that will address it later. And this is why I feel about the COVID crisis as well. As schools reopen and quickly close as the virus spikes, how can you call for as much in-person contact with teachers as possible, especially at high school? Instead of CTE, why are we providing teachers with portable materials to support the baby to deliver the quality of remote education that we are not supposed to provide to you? If consistency in Latin instruction and learning is our whole, we both have to deal with that. Our situation is predictable. People are closing buildings in both quarters, so if we were reopened too soon, people will become horribly ill, and there's a chance that some people will die. And that is predictable. And lastly, as for honesty, when we consider what we are, towards and future to do, and I use the word "towards" to describe the relationship power here, because I don't have the option to stay home, and I can't afford to lose my job. Parents, this is true. Lastly, in your calls for what you may think is what's best for your children, I ask you to remember that I am the one who's telling the truth. My mom's a student, she's 55, and I want to be able to see her. I also don't want her to become sick. And furthermore, I don't want her to ever have to care for me again, because I gave her plenty of attention in 1999 years without 2016. But I don't want her to have to take care of me. If I am the one that wants to increase the number of young, healthy people who are getting terribly sick, suffering organ damage, and/or know what long-term illness. I've heard it said that we are taking, that we are asking hospitals to consider us as first responders in regards to testing. I did not become a teacher since we told her to spray bottles and gloves. I hope there's enough of cleaning to stay healthy or protecting from contagion. But his manager tries to share a building with a large group of our students. Why also do you do this? You're telling me that you are...
Liv, can I ask you to summarize?
...in terms of my relationship, unless I can maintain weekly testing, I can't see my family or my tiny group of five friends.
Liv, can I ask you to summarize your point? And we have a number of people that are waiting.
Yes, my last sentence is that we are all sending these children, and I ask for courage and honesty in school reports tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doucette?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name is Rick Doucette, 69 Marlborough Street. I want to echo my support for Counselor Zaid, Lynn, and Brendan Cooper. I'm not going to repeat, try not to repeat anything that they already said. But I would like to go back to the Massachusetts reopening guidelines. And I think, you know, when I was listening to the PowerPoint presentations tonight, the goal, according to the Massachusetts reopening guideline, is our goal, I'm quoting, "Our goal this fall should be with the focus first and foremost on getting our students back into school buildings." And when I listened to the elementary and the NOC and the other, I mean, it definitely felt like that was the goal. The goal was, how do we solve this problem to get our kids back into school? When I listened to the presentation on high school, it did not feel like that. It felt like there was a lot of excuses as to why it can't be done. I recognize that, you know, there's a moving goalpost here. But, you know, for all of us that run a business, I'm in the medical device field, and I run a business, and, you know, it's a, things are changing. I mean, my world has definitely changed, and I have to change with it. And, you know, and I think that if the guidelines are given out by the CDC in Massachusetts, I know we have our own resident expert here, but, you know, they have their experts at the CDC and the Massachusetts reopening guidelines, I'm sure they spoke to a few experts as well. And if they say three feet apart is good enough for the deaf, if that's what you can do, then that's what we need to look at. It says that we don't need to do cohorts in high school, or we try to minimize the mixing of students to the extent feasible, and that's a direct quote from their guidelines, then that's what we should look at. I don't think we should be handcuffing ourselves, more so than we already are in this situation. It's a very difficult situation, I appreciate that. But I don't think we need to be adding to it by creating additional handcuffs in what is already in old school. So, to summarize, I mean, I think that we need to stick with the goal of the Massachusetts reopening guidelines, which is get the students back into school buildings.
Thank you very much.